Regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, May 8, 2013 at 7:03. And can we have members present?
Hans Hansen.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas. Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Joseph Otidy. Shaquille Ali.
Here.
We have Westlake Elementary School here for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand, please rise, and put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our home.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Safe Routes to School and Conflict Manager Program at Westlake Elementary School.
Yes, someone invite Principal Annabelle Klosman from Westlake School to come up and[110.56][110.56]introduce her students and the programs that they'll be speaking about today.
Okay, I just wanted to say that this year at Westlake, we have two wonderful, awesome programs that we've initiated. One of them is the Safe Routes to School Conflict, sorry, Traffic Patrol, and the other one is the Conflict Managers Sponsored by PTA. And at this point, I'm going to let Mr. Williams take over so that I can sit down.
All right, thanks.
Go ahead and introduce the students that came here today. So, we have our class president and conflict manager, Marcus Sweeney. Go ahead and come on. Please welcome Lawrence.
Mr. Williams, if you wouldn't mind if you would just say their first name, this is televised and will be on YouTube, so I want to make sure that just first names are stated.
Jed. Alex. Miracle. Mary Oop. So, at this time, our president of Westlake and conflict manager, Marcus will speak to you, followed by him will be Alex.
He needs to turn around and face us.
Sorry. As Westlake Conflict Managers, we help out children younger in our own age with their problems on and off the playground. We also try to be a role model for children younger than us and our age. Lastly, we help and play with children younger than our age during their recess time. As you can see, what us conflict managers try to make, how we try to make Westlake School a fun and safe place to be.
Hello, my name is Alex, and I'm one of Westlake's Safety Patrol Officers. At Westlake, we noticed that there were a lot of traffic at our school. When we heard that there was something to do to help solve the traffic problems and keep students safe, all of us here volunteered. For the Safety Patrol, we have attended educational trainings. At these trainings, we learn many things, including how to move the traffic along, get students safely into the vehicles, and how we could encourage students to use crosswalks. One of our school parents, Mrs. Ali, has supported us in many ways, including running our Walk and Roll to School Days, which encouraged students to safely commute to school without the use of cars. This has helped reduce traffic and inspired us to be healthy. Some benefits we have seen since starting this program include smoother traffic after school, fewer students crossing in the middle of the street, more parking for teachers, and increase in designated areas for parents to pick up students. Being members of the Safety Patrol has given us opportunities to work positively together, get to know other students at the school, and help to be a part of building a safe and healthy community.
At this point, I'd like to introduce a parent who's been very, very instrumental in starting the Safe Routes to School Program. And because of her involvement, it's really been a success for us. And her name is Ms. Ali, Mrs. Ali, and she just has a few words to say about this year's program and next year's.
Hello, my name is Sidh Ali, and I'm the Safe Routes to School Coordinator for Westlake Elementary. Thanks to the Safe Routes to School Program, we were able to have task force meetings where we met with concerned parents and teachers, the Daly City Police, Traffic Engineer Shirley Chan, and Dana Luhon. Together with Mrs. Klosman, we figured out a way to improve traffic around our school, making walking to school safer. We were also able to bring to the students of Westlake Elementary fun educational ways to walk to school safely, or roll to school safely, as well as promoting health and environmental benefits. We had Walk and Roll to School Days where we gave out incentives and had special guest speakers like the Daly City Police and Superweaver, the Safety Mascot. This week, we will be having bike and pedestrian safety assemblies where the students will be able to learn and participate by riding or walking through a course. They will also be getting bicycle and helmet checks. So overall, Safe Routes to School was a big success, and recently, we found out that we were awarded a large amount of money for next year, and we will be able to purchase a marquee, which we really needed for our school. So we are very excited to continue this program next year. Thank you.
Do I need to go up there?
No.
I just want to really commend the students. The conflict managers really go out there and solve conflicts, and you know, in this day and age, it's not just about academics, but it's about building relationships and how to get along with others and understand other people's perspectives. And so when you watch them out there, they're teaching kids to give a little on each side and to consider each other's perspective, and they do it really quite well. I'm very, very impressed with how they manage the playground. And again, with the Traffic Patrol students, they have to contend sometimes with parents that are not in the best of moods, and with a smile, they just try and tell them, you know, move up, move up, and we've changed the way of thinking that it's okay to walk, you know, a half a block, and you don't have to pick up right in front of the school. So I'd like everyone just to give them a really big, warm round of applause for all of them. Thank you.
All right, any questions or comments from board members?
Well, it sounds terrific. I guess we'll have to go to see what it looks like.
Ah, come on down.
Yes ma'am. Well, I live far away.
Only a walk and a half, I think.
All right, Ms. Brizuela.
Just thank you for all that you're doing for the students, and it's very well appreciated. Keep up the good work.
And I want to echo those words. Right now, school safety is a big part of state and national debate, and I'm really glad that our district is putting money towards support services and counselors and that you're doing this kind of work. We need to make sure that we keep our young people safe in school and out of school, so let's give them one more round of applause.
And if I can, I want to apologize for missing your presentation. My parental responsibilities were colliding with my board responsibilities.
All right, and we have some certificates for you.
So the board, you will notice that there's a sticky on the last name, so you can just share the first name and not say the last name, that would be great.
Making life easy on us. Do you want to put down hands?
Yes.
Alex. Alex. And Miracle. And Isabel.
Lawrence. And Mary Lou. I have one for Marcus. And the next one, Angel.
Congratulations to Jennifer.
Next.
And Jed. So, does everyone have one?
Make sure we didn't leave anyone out.
Well, thank you very much, students from Westlake School, and especially Ms. Ali for helping to organize this group of fine youngsters and helping to educate them in the safety, traffic safety, and helping to be the parent voice there for sanity and safety. Thank you.
Do we have any communications? Comments from any administrator?
I just want to remind everyone that it is that time of year where open house comes out again, and tomorrow night is our middle school open houses and also Susan B. Anthony's. So be sure you have checked with your child as to the time for that. Next Thursday will be our elementary back, our open house nights. And thank you very much for Westlake, to the parents and staff and the students for all the hard work you've been doing.
I'd also like to thank Westlake for their presentation tonight, and I just want to let everyone know that as we transition to the Common Core State Standards, there's going to be some differences in our instruction and things, and so eighth grade, we're starting with math. We're going to have eighth grade Common Core Math, and so we have a flyer to keep our community informed of the transition as we move forward, and so it's a frequently asked questions flyer. It's going home to middle schools for open house, and then our fifth and sixth grade families in, next week, in their open house. But I have a couple extras here if anyone wants them.
All right, comments from any board members?
Well, I guess I'll do it now. I just wanted to say I did go to Benjamin Franklin School, they had the falcon band playing, and it was together with some of the elementary schools, Garden Village, Widge Wilson, and Pauline Brown, and Westlake School, and they were terrific. It was a wonderful show, and I just wanted to let them know how well I enjoyed it. Rebuilding Together happened on the weekend, and, last weekend, and we had a project at General Purging School, turned out really, really well. So if any of you want to go visit it, it's tremendous. They did go back, my husband was one of the captains, and they went back today, yesterday, and did some more planting and more stuff over there.
Is there anything going on tomorrow?
No, I think it's, I think they're pretty well, they're almost done. There's some plumbing has to be done again, but, or extra plumbing, but they have benches there now for the parents. And not, they couldn't do the next project until later, but there'll be a handicap ramp put on, which is tremendous. It's all free, been donated, so it's a great, wonderful thing for General Purging, to be upgraded like that. And then I did visit Susan B. Anthony and saw their, all their wonderful exhibit all over with the art stuff on the walls, it was really great. Some wonderful ideas from the students, and it just was amazing. So I won't, I'll just leave some others for later on. Oh, no, I did have one thing, but since our council PTA president is here, would you like to do it? You sure? I didn't know she was going to get here on time. Yeah, okay, then I'll announce it, okay. Just want to announce that Jefferson Council PTA is celebrating their 50th anniversary of being in existence here in, at our schools. And so there will be on Saturday, June the 1st, at 6:00 PM, a celebration dinner to be held at the Elks Lodge in South San Francisco, and we invite anyone that would like to come to come join us as we recognize those people that have won the HSA awards, PTA officers who have served, as well as retirees from our district, principals, and classified teachers. So if you want to come, it's not, it's only $20. Anyway, we have flyers, we'll be sending out to everybody, so we invite you, please come and, and help celebrate with the PTA. That's it.
Thanks, Ms. Brizuela, and thanks to the administrators and fellow board members for keeping our comments short so that we can hear all four of our speakers, and they will get their full three minutes. We will be listening. So first, I will call, so this is persons wishing to address the board, Mr. Seisen.
We have five speakers? Six?
Two, is it now, is it two and forty-five seconds?
All right, well.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. I am Bian Sison, my wife, Leslie. We are parents of two young students at Susan B. Anthony, Josh Edrosolo, fifth grade, and Tenille, first grade. We are here tonight in support of your school district and your esteemed teachers. Firstly, kudos to the members of the school board for keeping the district solvent through these dire economic times, so congratulations. Secondly, I just want to inform and share to the board that both our children, Josh and Tenille, have really thrived and developed extremely well, in spite of their parents, since we moved to Susan B. Anthony and your district three and a half years ago. Asia, by Switzerland, Republican Texas, Oklahoma, now they're progressive, so you can imagine our household. They are very happy going to school every day as they feel cared for by their teachers. Now, they mention this regularly, every day, not only by them, but also their schoolmates. So this is, I attest to this. I believe our teachers have worked very hard with very little help while trying to improve education for all our children. Now thankfully, we passed Proposition 30, which raised a little bit of tax that will bring revenue to the state, okay? According to forecasters, for the first time in years, the education budget will improve annually, and Prop 98, which funds education, must be fully funded beginning next year. The priority, I believe, must be to take care of our teachers' needs. It has been seven long years since they've had a raise. They must also have affordable but effective health insurance. This is very little to ask for the people who are in the trenches fighting for our children every day. They must not be saddled with worrisome baggages while they teach our children. Now, please be reminded that your state, or our state, California, is the 12th largest economy in the world, and educators are responsible for its excellent human resource, excuse me. Your district is a world-class institution led by these teachers. So by the way, your school district sent me a card announcing that Josh, our son, was chosen a student of the year. So we'll see you on that karma thing, right? So thank you very much. We accept the invitation? By, yeah, under, of course, under the ever-present and caring Ms. Burke at SBA. She's really very loving and caring. I asked Josh, how did you get there? His answer was, well, first Coach Felix gave me my confidence on third grade. And then last year, Ms. Camacho pointed out my strengths and challenged me. And this year, Mr. Bell told me to just do it. So for our teachers, please just do it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Anushka Takla, I teach third grade at M.H. Tobias. We are the professionals that work with the students in the community of Daly City. Many of us are parents, too. We don't just want students to meet the standards, because we want students to exceed the standards, we work tirelessly to bring enrichment to our classrooms. We are professionals, yet we have neither been given a raise nor a COLA, a cost of living increase, since 2006. We are professionals who have been cooperative by taking furlough days due to the dire projections we were presented with, yet the ending balances for Jefferson Elementary School District's 2011-2012 document states that the surplus was 39.2 percent, the highest of the 25 school districts listed in the Northern California region. Our budget surplus is more than double the most conservative recommendation of 17 percent. Honestly, I'm outraged to hear that we have been offered a 1.65 percent raise when last year's ending balance, excuse me, I'm a little bit, yeah, last year's ending balance indicated that we have 17,590,995 in surplus. And you can pass this around, I'm sure you're well aware of that. Substantial health care increases are reducing our salaries further. When the district tells me that I have, I will have to pay 14,000 out of pocket for my family health insurance, I ask, what is the surplus being saved for? The rainy day is here for me. Thanks to AFT 3267 and their negotiating skills, federal money saved my family from more extreme hardship this year. Tonight, I ask you again, fourth time I stand here, to release surplus funds and take care of your professional community because you can. As a member of your benefits committee, I urge you to have a checker, do an independent review of our benefits program. This is no cost to us unless they find a savings, and they will do it for a single district, you don't have to be part of a consortium. We are professionals, and we will keep working with conviction to give our students the best possible program for their future careers. Thank you.
Brenda, Brenda Wemis. Is that correct?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Brenda Wemis, and I'm a parent of a student at Susan B. Anthony Elementary School. I am also part of the PTA and have been a part of the PTA for quite a long time. I'm here tonight to support teachers in the Jefferson School District. We appreciate that our school board members and districts have kept us solvent through hard times. Teachers have worked hard to do more with less help, improve an education for all students in our district. Now, thanks to everyone in our community, we have passed Prop 30, which raises taxes and it will bring more income into the state. For the first time in years, forecasters are predicting that the education budget should improve yearly, and Prop 98, which funds education, must be fully funded starting next year. So things are looking up for our education in our state. It is time to commit some of our large reserves to the people who teach our children by supporting our hard-working teachers and support staff with a salary increase and affordable health care. The last year, the last salary increase was seven years ago, and before that, four years ago. In other words, in the last 10 years, there have been two modest raises. This is a high-price area to live in, and we are asking you for help. We elect board members to take care of the teachers who take care of our children. We trust that you will find the money to give these hard-working teachers and support staff long overdue raises and provide health care for their families. Thank you.
$50, should we recommend two minutes per speaker? All right. We have more speakers. All right, Natalie Jacquet.
Good evening, board members and district administrators. My name is Natalie Jacque, and I teach at SBA. I know you've been listening to a lot of numbers lately, and I have some different numbers for you. Please keep in mind, I'm not unique, many of these numbers can apply to many of the teachers in our district. Twenty-seven, the number of years I've been teaching. Three, the number of languages I speak. Two, the number of additional certificates I have earned. Two, the number of degrees I have. Thirty-two, the number of students I have in my classroom. My colleagues have thirty-five. Zero, the number of aides I have for help. Three, the number of breaks, planning periods, I'm supposed to have, recess, PE, lunch. One, the number of breaks I usually might get when I'm not tutoring the kids that need help. Remember, I have no aide. Ten, the minimum number of hours I spend working on schoolwork. Remember, my breaks were used to tutor, so planning is done on my own time. One thousand fourteen, the amount of money I spent out of pocket last year for classroom and student supplies. Sixteen point three, the total inflation rate for the past seven years. Sixteen point seven, the COLA given from the federal government for the past seven years. Fourteen, the approximate COLA from the state at about 2% a year for the past seven years. One, the number of years between raises if I worked at Chamba. Two, the time my rent has gone up since I've had a raise. Four thousand eight hundred, the dollar of amount of my rent increase since our last raise. After the last raise, I considered selling one of my two kidneys. Seventeen, the age of my car. Three, the number of jobs I had last year to make ends meet. Tired teachers don't make good teachers. Nine thousand eight hundred sixty-three, how much more I would make if I worked in Millbrae, not including medical. Ten thousand five hundred ninety, how much more I would be making if I worked in San Mateo, my hometown. Priceless, the value of a good teacher. We have done our part, now it's time to do yours. Other districts can have a large reserve, they have taken care of their teachers. This is an issue of survival. Teachers need a living wage.
Shannon Williams.
Can't quite follow that. Actually, so, good evening. I thought I was just coming here this evening to support these wonderful students. However, I was asked this afternoon to speak on behalf of Westlake Elementary's hard-working teachers. My understanding is that there has not been, oh, first of all, if I get any facts wrong, my apologies. This is just what I heard at this afternoon's meeting. My understanding is that there has not been a raise in salary for X amount of years. Meanwhile, the cost of living, including health care, has risen. I was told today that we can expect an offer of a one-time 2.17 percent increase pay for the next school year. Teachers are asking for a minimum increase of 8 percent, which, to my understanding, would still allow a minor salary increase despite the rising out-of-pocket increases in health plans. I can speak from my experience. I have always wanted to be a teacher. I believe in free public education. I've been working and volunteering in schools since I was 16 years old. Despite working multiple jobs throughout college, at one time, I was a bicycle cab driver and lifeguard. Having earned multiple degrees and credentials, I mounted substantial student debt. The reality is, I know I will never be able to pay off my loans, save for a down payment on a home, or have many of the things people in our society so desire. Being a single person, I honestly do not know how those teachers and families are making it. As teachers, we wear so many hats in a day. We're educators, parents, therapists. I think it was a private eye at one point today. We go home thinking about our students. We go to sleep thinking about our students, and we wake up thinking about how we can do more for our students. That's from the heart. I believe the humble 8 percent salary increase teachers are asking for is reasonable. Thank you for giving me time to speak this evening.
Thank you for letting me to speak to you. First of all, I just want to say I love those matching little coffee mugs you have. I think that's really great. I think it's really cool. And I love this. I would love it for my fluency time at school. So if you ever have extra ones of these, send them my way. I'm here representing Daniel Webster. My name's Donna Hart. I'm teaching third grade currently, but I've taught all combinations between K and four, and I'll be teaching fourth next year. I'm here, actually, I wasn't planning on coming because I've had a full day, and I just thought I'd give you like a little glimpse into my regular Wednesdays. It started way before eight. It included me going out to buy emergency snacks because we ran out, and it's our last day of star testing. Which is no big deal. I mean, that's okay. I do it all the time. So, we did that. We did our sixth and final day of testing for eighth grader, I mean, eight-year-olds. We made sure everything was done right. We spent the rest of the day working and investigating and having a great time. At 2 o'clock, I had my articulation meeting with my grade levels partners, where we start to figure out how we're going to fit 24 of each of our children into two classes next year. And just, out of three classes, 24, 24, and 24, and two, it's a lot of kids. 3 o'clock, I worked on everything I needed to do for the field trip coming up. I also contacted my chaperones. I did all the paperwork that I could and planned for tomorrow. At 5:15, I left for my, two of my students' baseball game, because they play for the Daly City League, and I'd been promising to go. And last week, I would have gone, but he gave me the wrong day. So, I happened to spend two hours in the classroom waiting and then going and finding not my child, but a bunch of people looking at me very strangely. A bunch of parents went, I'm like, really, I am a teacher. I'm looking for my student. The game is going good. I had to leave in the fifth inning so that I could get here by 7:15. And I'm not done. I would like to say, by the time I go home, my husband will have dinner for me, but I doubt it. So, I have a feeling I'll be correcting papers and cooking at the same time. And that's my Wednesday, and that's fine, and I love it. And I know you're all aware that we work many hours without any extra pay, and we do it because we love it. We love our kids, we love our district, we love our schools. But please, please consider a pay raise. I am thankfully without a child at the moment. He is in Atlanta, on his own, with a job. But for the last five years, I've been paying $5,000 a year about, just to ensure him. And it's really painful. And I no longer have that burden, but many of my friends do. And I just ask you to think about it. So, thank you.
Good evening, Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. I wanted to congratulate the Westlake School on behalf of all the students here tonight, and the staff members, Shannon Williams and Annabelle Closeman, and the great programs they're doing, their Safe Roots to School and the Conflict Resolution Program. It's great to hear about. I also wanted to congratulate the staff of SBA. I think many of us have already heard that they got a Title I Achievement Award, which is a really nice honor for them. And I also want to remind everyone here that there's an art show next Tuesday night at Policyton Middle School for the whole district, May 14th, showcasing art of the students of the district put on by, well, the students who did the artwork, but the teachers who did the projects and the lessons and collected it. And these things are great and wonderful, and I'm happy to talk about them, and I'm glad that everyone knows about them. But you know what I'm going to say next, which is that these things happen because of our employees and our teachers, and these things happen also because of the few remaining classified staff out there that also help us get through the day. And as you know, we need a raise. You know that already. And we know that, we're happy that the district is planning or looking forward to try to reward employees, but we want to say that it has to be enough to meet these expectations and needs out here, because they've been building for seven years, these needs, and we just have to do enough to make it worth everyone's while. Thank you.
Yes, and so, just to piggyback on what Ms. Dart said, we did receive notification that Susan B. Anthony did receive the Title I Achievement Award. They're one of 56 schools in the state of California. Only school in San Mateo County. There is also only one school in San Francisco County and one school in Santa Clara County. So this is a big achievement. I just want to read a little bit about the criteria that is described in the news release. The criteria to qualify for the Title I Award have become more rigorous in recent years. To receive this distinction, the school must demonstrate that all students are making significant progress toward proficiency on California's academic content standards. Additionally, the school's socio-economically disadvantaged students, those who would otherwise qualify for free and reduced lunch, must have doubled the achievement targets set for them for two consecutive years. So we're very proud of the staff, the students, and the whole school community at Susan B. Anthony, and I want to congratulate them publicly, and, you know, we'll congratulate them in many other ways as time goes on. So, thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
All those in favor.
Second.
Second.
Get that little.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Establishing meeting guidelines.
I can introduce this. So if you remember, at the February 23rd meeting of the governing board, we had a special session, and for that meeting, the board selected some meeting guidelines to help govern their process during that day. And at that meeting, there was also a suggestion, and it was included in our summary, that was approved a couple weeks ago, to revisit those and consider whether or not the board would want to adopt meeting guidelines similar to those or those very same ones for these governing board meetings. And so here's an opportunity for the board to discuss how they would like to proceed with that idea.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Vidalis. Does everyone have the information? All right. So we'll start with Mr. Hanson. If you have any questions or comments, deliberation. All right. Dr. Douglas.
Are we doing this? Yes.
I think these are our sound, basic guidelines for carrying on our discussions, and, you know, I think we discussed them very thoroughly when we proposed them originally, and I remain in favor of them.
Sounds good. Ms. Brazuela.
They're fine.
They're fine? All right. I think they're fine as well. So if there's no more deliberation, do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the established meeting guidelines.
I second that motion.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Curriculum and instruction.
Before we move along, one of the suggestions was, and I will follow through on this, is to create a poster that we can pull out and post up in this meeting, so we'll make sure that we get one that's portable for us to use here.
All right. Just in case no one knows what we're talking about, this is how we're going to conduct ourselves and do business and model the behavior that we want to see out of our students.
We're reading them aloud.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. So the guidelines that we just agreed on, since not everybody probably has them, that we will respect differences, we will show respect and never dismiss or devalue others. Anybody else want to read any of the others, or should I carry on?
No. Does everybody have it in their packet?
I'm thinking that everybody out there doesn't necessarily have it. When we have a difference of opinion, we will debate the facts of the situation and avoid personalities. We will address process, not personalities. We will beld upon the ideas of others and look for common ground. We will paraphrase for understanding. We will listen actively to all ideas. We will listen openly without preparing our responses. We will stay focused on our goals. There is a typo there, Mr. Vidalis. We can fix that. And avoid getting sidetracked. And those are, I'm looking over my glasses at the kids because those seem like great rules to start learning now, and by the time you're our age, maybe you won't have to be reminded.
Also get some of the conflict resolution children.
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Dr. Douglas.
Does that mean these are gone?
Well, those are the older ones that we just approved.
Disapproving the others?
You want to just keep those in?
Well, I'd like it to be, because I think that these are key words that pop out a lot better than this.
I don't think that's a problem to keep that.
Yeah. We're talking about the previous norms, that they were like one words. And I think a one word, kind of, you focus on what it means rather than speak whole sentence.
All right. So why don't we go ahead and read those, then?
Okay. It says, number one, truth and kindness, respect, paraphrase, collaboration, collaborative, I messages, not you, rapid participation, confidence, and I don't know if this is okay, but have fun. Because that should be in everybody's life all the time.
Right.
All right. Thanks.
So now we're making a motion to approve this, right?
It's already been approved.
No, but that was included, right?
It's my understanding, but if you want to.
No, I'm just wondering if that's what it meant.
I think we're all.
Good question. I don't think there was anything about approving the new ones that deleted the old ones.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Lee, you can tell her.
Although we know this is very enticing to watch us do business, the little ones, if they, you know, need to get home, this is a good time for you to go.
The big ones?
It's also a good time to stay, but there's no pressure.
We will not be offended.
Curriculum and instruction, pupil, personnel services, acceptance of donations.
Well, Mr. Otydi isn't here to read them off, but he's, okay, but maybe before everybody leaves, it might be a good time to share these, that we have donations to George Washington School from Life Touch, from D. Lee Rushhour and the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, from Ms. Carolyn Wong, from Target. Are these all from the same, yeah, from Yvette Rals Torres, from Mrs. Nguyen Sheen and the Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign. I think those are the different sources. So we want to thank all of those people and those sources of funds that were donated to George Washington in the last two weeks.
Perfect.
We do rely heavily on our donors and volunteers and contributors. So I will make a motion that we approve those, accept those donations with thanks.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Parent involvement advisory committee updates on actions.
Yes, I would like to invite Ben Turner. He is the principal of Franklin D. Roosevelt, as well as the PIAC facilitator, and PIAC is our Parent Involvement Advisory Committee, and he's going to share what PIAC has accomplished this year. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Turner.
Hello, board. Thank you for everybody who stayed here. So for those of you who aren't familiar, the PIAC is the Parent Involvement Advisory Committee. Our main role is to ensure adequate opportunities to implement parent involvement policy and research/recommend programs, resources, ideas to further implement policy. Basically, how to get parents to school to be involved in the school so that they can help bridge the gap between the school and homes. This year, we had several meetings, and I want to thank all of our members, one of our board members, Marie Brazuela, Tanya Santa Cruz, Christina Spinola, Regina Mevitt, sorry if I'm messing up names, Adriana Arambala, Sandy McIllic, Kelly Bohm, Steve Schindler, Pat Bohm, Natty Fong, Norma DeClaro, and Warren Shelby. Our basic goal this year was to create a list of activities that principals and PTAs in the school could use for parent nights, or ways to bring parents into the school during the day. Most, what we talked about in our meetings is that, for the most part, schools have varying amounts of night activities to bring parents in, and a lot of that was because PTAs who sometimes run the events, parents who run the events, principals, we need help. We need help in how to organize the events, an easy go-to guide. So basically, our goal was, create that for them. Through our research and sort of all of our meetings, what we came to is creating a list of activities that parents, administrators, teachers could use to help create an easy night event. In this list, that if anybody else would like a copy, I'll put some right up here for you, okay? We basically broke it down into three different activities to bring parents in: family nights, daytime activities, and communication. For family nights, you'll notice a lot of web resources on there. We will be emailing all of these information with a lot of the printouts that come from these websites to the principals of each school so they can distribute it to their PTA, parents, and teachers. A lot of these websites have easy printable things that you can just easily take off there, fill in your school, the night, the activities, just run them off, really easy. So there, it's not, oh, my God, I'd like to do an environmental night. What do I do? What activities do I have to get? Oh, my God, I'm going to run around for 12 hours trying to organize these things? No, it's all there. It's a big packet, some of these resources. If you send for it, they'll even send you DVD video of how to do it, or information for the parents when they come in. We wanted to make it as user-friendly as possible. So when you look at all of these nights here, you know, at my school, my goal is next year is to have at least two of these events, and that's sort of what we're going to probably ask from principals. Try and schedule two of them, and if you have all the resources there, maybe PTA, your parents, teachers, they can help out, because it shouldn't just be the principal doing all the work, but it shouldn't just be the teachers, it should be everybody doing those. For the daytime activities. Because bringing them to school to see what happens is really important. Last but not least, we looked at communication. School Site Council is a really important part of all of how schools function. What we noticed is, the parents at the meetings were a little unclear about the role of school Site Councils, and basically how that plays a role in the governance of a school. So some of the information there is about making sure that you post all of your agendas and things online, and that you make it very clear that school Site Council is really a way for you to become involved in your school and the governance of it. Updated websites, which I know Mr. Vidalis has been working with all the principals on, because it's something that if parents want to find out information, some of them...some parents don't have the ability to come to school and visit during the day, but they may be able to go on a website and see what's going on and try and plan their time or their future time. One thing that I use a lot, and that I really hope a lot of other principals start to do, is use automated phone dialers, emails, and text messages. It's a quick way to just update your parents about things, because sometimes you put it in a child's Wednesday envelope, and it doesn't always make it home. Whereas if they get an email, or a phone message, or an email that has your phone message, because that also goes out, it's really an easy way to help get parents involved. So with those things, and I really just want to thank all of the members of PIAC who spent the time at night, sometimes I guess a lot of it was during the fall when it was very dark out at our meetings. So wanted to present this to the board. We will be sending this out to the principals with your approval in the near future.
All right, thanks, Mr. Vidalis.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want to start off by saying that I'm really excited about this. Being a parent and an educator, and being involved in these types of events at schools is not easy. And whatever we can do to leverage and help people kind of will make it easier, like you said, is welcome. And are there any questions or comments from any other board members?
I was thinking much the same thing, having been in the position of being the person who has run around like a chicken with my head cut off trying to figure out how to plan one of these things. That's a huge helpful resource. I also will sort of reinforce what you were saying about the automated calls and emails as communication to parents. I get them from, my son's at Fernando, and Ms. Parcells is very good about that. I've come to rely on getting those phone calls to remind me that this, that, and the other thing is coming up and happening, and it's incredibly helpful. The piece of paper, even if it makes it out of that envelope, may not stay on top of the pile long enough to be registered appropriately. The phone call's hard to miss.
All right. Ms. Brizuela?
Well, having been on the committee, I kind of know all this already, but I would like to say that I'm very happy that we, as we discuss things, that we included anti-bullying, which is a real big issue everywhere, and that we tried to let every parent know and understand what it's really all about, so...
I'm a little surprised that...there's one thing that I know about Daly City parents and these events. You didn't mention anything about food on here.
Oh, that's included.
Included all events, but that's not the main...
We're looking at the certain areas that we want to focus on, and then it's up to, you know, a potluck gets included or whatever.
Mr. Ali is correct, however. If you feed them, they will come.
Yeah.
Or if the children perform, they come. That too.
All right, this is great, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the principals have to say about it, and also hearing about the implementation of it. If you can do two nights, maybe you should scale back or combine nights with other schools, you know, those types of things. But this is a good start.
Yeah, thank you to everybody who put the time in on that.
Business and financial procedures. Heat pump replacement at various sites.
I might like to introduce the item.
Ms. Cusler? I think we could...the three items are very similar.
Okay.
So why don't we just take those items, two, three, and four together? Because they have the same introduction, they're just different projects, so...
I think we don't have questions. I think we already read it already. To read it, Julie? Just read the titles.
So there are three, there were three bid openings for three different jobs. The lowest responsible bidder has been chosen from each. And one of them is obviously for the heat pump replacements at various schools that do not include Thomas Edison, Fernando, and General Pershing. Otherwise, all the other schools are included. And then, of course, the domestic water service at Garden Village and General Pershing and George Washington, the painting. These funds would be, these projects would be paid for from the SFP reimbursement funds, not from the new bond funds. And these were on the list of priorities that you had approved.
All right. So everyone has read this, and if there's no questions, I'd like to make the motion. I'd like to make the motion to approve all three items.
Second.
All right. Heat, I mean, Garden Village New Domestic Water Service.
A heat pump, the heat pump.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I did skip that. All right, heat pump replacement at various sites.
And General Pershing.
Garden Village New Domestic Water Service, and General Pershing and George Washington Schools Painting.
Okay. We already have a second.
Do we have a second?
I believe Mr. Hanson already said a second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And now we have Resolution Number 13-05-08, Education Protection Account.
I would also like to introduce this item. I'd like to give a little bit of background on it. Proposition 30 was passed by voters in November, which had a temporary tax increase. As a result, the EPA was established, that's the Education and Protection Account. That account will receive the taxes, and then will distribute the taxes to K-14 education. This is not an increase in revenues. This is merely, the passage of Prop. 30 stayed off additional cuts to education. So we will be at the same level. We are at the same level as we were in the previous year. The revenues don't change, it's how we receive the revenues that change. We will, instead of receiving through the normal manner that we receive revenue limit throughout the year, 20% of the revenue that we would normally receive that way will be received through the Education Protection Account, and we will receive it at the very end of 2013, 12, 13 year. So the very end of June, approximately, a little over $6 million. The reason for this resolution is in order for, though these are unrestricted funds, there are restrictions that come with them, restrictions and requirements. And one of those restrictions and requirements is that the board must, at a public meeting, take action to determine how these funds will be spent. The funds cannot be spent for administrative purposes. And this will have to happen each year until 2018, when the initiative sunsets. So what we have placed on the ballot today is that action, and what we're saying here is the funds will all be spent on instructional staff salaries, which are all compliant with the unrestricted restrictions of how these funds are to be spent. If we do not take action, then we would not be allowed to spend the funds.
All right. That's clear. So do we want to just move?
Did you say this was...it's unclear what this is going to be used for?
Instructional salaries. And it can be in anything that's instructional in the classroom.
With no restrictions? That it has to be...
Yeah.
That's the restriction?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just asking, you said there's some restrictions. Is there any other restrictions?
Oh, well, we've taken care of all of those. That you have to vote on something, there's a restriction for you.
That will focus on the children, and they will...
Yes.
It's to have transparency.
Good. Okay. Then I would like... I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 130508, Education Protection Account.
Second.
And roll call?
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye. So we have a retirement from classified personnel.
Yes, we do. Mary Ann Epperson, who's been the snack bar manager at Ben Franklin, recently retired, would have been effective April 26th. And since she's worked in the district since February of 1995, we do request a resolution be prepared to commend her for her years of service with us.
Make a motion to approve the retirement request from Mary Ann Epperson, effective 4/26/13, and that a resolution be prepared to commend her for her years of service to the district.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Board policies.
True.
Is it true? Yeah, we're almost at the bottom. Yes.
Board policies and administrative regulations.
Yes, and so at the last meeting, we reviewed these policies, and upon, before leaving, there was a couple of questions that we were going to investigate and look into. So if you don't mind, I think I'll just go through one at a time since there's so few. So Board Policy 6153. We decided, after speaking to different constituents and people, that keeping it, keeping the language general here was appropriate, to just say two adults per field trip was appropriate. Where you see some of the more specifics is in the Administrative Regulation, the AR. And what we did there, yes?
On the first page, it says at the different ages.
Yes.
But you didn't just say that. So is it going to be at the different ages? Because it sounds very, it doesn't sound appropriate to say at the different ages.
To ensure the safety of students at the different, at...
At the different ages doesn't sound quite right.
What would be your suggestion?
Appropriate, maybe, or...
Ensure the safety of students...
Primary ages or something, or, but, I don't, I didn't think it sounded too good. You can help me out with that.
Yeah, I'm looking at, trying to think what would...
Something that is more appropriate.
I mean, in some ways, it's unnecessary, because to ensure the safety of students does mean that we need, you have to think about their ages. But if we want to call attention to the age, I would say perhaps to ensure the safety of students...
At least.
As appropriate to, or...
You know, I don't think you need anything, you just say safety of students.
But at least two adults.
Of different...
At least. At least. And so that means if you decide that you need an extra one because there are little tiny guys that run around, well, then you can add another person.
Okay. So what I hear is strike out at the different ages and but...
Don't you think?
And just keep at least...
Yeah, I think that's, because it's still the...
General.
The key is that it's however many are necessary for safety.
Yeah.
And that, obviously, one of the things you consider when deciding that is what age the students are.
And I think the teachers can take care of it.
And then one of the examples is the water activity, where you want a lot of people watching.
Yes.
Right.
And so, in the Administrative Regulation, is where we decided to get a little bit more specific to how this is going to be monitored.
Right.
And so, under supervision, number two, we specified, and that at least two chaperones per field trip, one of which shall be a classroom teacher. We added step three, or item three.
Did we change...I still have the version that says one which shall be the regular classroom teacher, I believe. We struck out regular.
I think it should read shall be a classroom teacher.
A classroom teacher.
Shall be a classroom teacher. That's the way that my version has it.
Yeah, okay.
And then there was a number three that was added, just to add another step and just make it more explicit. The school principal, in collaboration with the teacher or teachers, planning the field trip shall determine if additional chaperones are needed to provide adequate supervision. So as part of that, we've modified the study authorization form that actually now includes a space to mark the number of chaperones, and it always included the number of students, but now it includes the number of chaperones attending. So there's that time for that conversation to occur. If there are questions, the principal reviews it, and Director of Curriculum and Instruction reviews it as well.
All right.
That's done ahead of time. I'm sorry.
Was that always the procedure, that principals review field trip...
Yes.
But you're talking about when they first plan it.
At the end of the planning stage, yes.
And then we did, I know last time, there was some discussion on flexibility at the last minute, that we're not going to hold ourselves to not be able to get it done. So does that...
I think the flexibility still is included in this, at the, you know, by saying that at least one of the chaperones must be a classroom teacher.
And that wording allows it to be a substitute teacher?
It can be a substitute teacher. It could also be, and when I was a school administrator, especially some of the field trips where you wanted the kids to be known, you know, the substitute teacher would go in another classroom, and, you know, last year's teacher gets to go on a field trip with the fourth grade, you know, last year's third grade teacher gets to go to the fourth grade field trip.
Somebody who can call the right kids by their names.
And knows the kids, and knows who needs to be held close, and who can be allowed some...
Got it.
The rest seem like they're just grammatical ones.
Yeah, there's just a couple, yeah. And so then, yeah, then the other, the other ones, I think we made no changes to at the last meeting, so they're just here for a second reading.
Okay.
Do we have...
We do have one more page. Lunch? Lunch?
That's what we looked at last time.
Yeah, I think it all looks the same.
Mm-hmm. There it is. Let me see if there...
Do we have any deliberation, or no?
No.
All right, so...
I'll make a motion, we approved Board Policies as listed in the agenda. Oh, wait, we have a speaker?
I actually am fine with the decisions being made. Field trips, I don't need to...
All right, thanks.
Sorry. Okay, then I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve our second reading of Board Policies as listed here.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All on the same page, it's not a problem. Reports from board representatives on district committees. I don't think we've had any...
Not so far.
Comments from any board member?
I still have nothing to say for myself.
Well, I just, I don't know if anyone is doing it enough to close the meeting, and memory of one of our teachers.
All right. Persons wishing to address the board, we have no speaker cards. And so now we will convene to close session, and in honor of Athena Constant, former teacher at Thomas Edison for 36 years.
Let's take a moment of silence now.